Friday evening is football game, so I can't do that.
Did you see they're having a closed session coming up?
Yeah, I think it's Monday. I think it might be Monday, so it'd be good to meet before. Yeah. It should be before then.
Hey, Ted?
Yes, sir.
We're live.
Oh, we're live.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, calling to order the October 7th, 2025 meeting of the Long Lake City Council. Good evening, everyone. It's 6:32 PM. All council members are present this evening in person with the exception of Councilmember newcomer, who is joining us remotely. With that, let's do, move on to item two, the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. With that, move on to item three, Mayor's Comments, Long Lake News, Meeting Review and Updates. Just a couple of meeting review items tonight. We just finished a city council work session where we had two items on the agenda. One was to review a city administrator mentoring proposal from David Drouin Associates. So we just received some information from staff on that. And then the second item was a closed session regarding attorney-client privilege, discussion of open litigation related to the fire services contracts. So we had a discussion about that. And then besides that, just went, attended a great event last week, the annual Minnesota Mayor's Association Fall Meetup. That was in, at the University of Minnesota Landscape Arboretum, and we had a good group of mayors from across the state attend that. We had a guest speaker discuss from the state who discussed conflict resolution and kind of city council, you know, settings, whether it be with intra-council disputes or with those from the public that are, you know, speaking in public comments or things like that. So that was informative, and luckily, we haven't had many, if any, issues with that here. And what a great resource the Landscape Arboretum is. I haven't spent a lot of time there in recent years. We got a kind of a tour of that and really a lot of great things going on down there. So definitely get down and check out the Landscape Arboretum if you haven't been there lately. They seem to be growing and growing in their programming. So a couple of updates there. Oh, and then last night was the Long Lake Fire Department Fire Prevention Open House, or Annual Event. So I attended that. Great event, good turnout from. All firefighters had all their equipment out and trucks and given fire truck rides and different demos and exhibits and things like that. I spoke a lot of firefighters there, so thanks to the Fire Department for putting that on. And it's kind of a public safety teaching event for community members to learn some things about fire safety, and always a great event. So a couple of updates there on what's been occurring in some city worlds in last, or last couple of weeks. With that, move on to item four, which is to approve this evening's agenda. I'll point out that we are going to be joined this evening by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Senator Ann Johnson Stewart, and she informed me she's running a little bit late, so she'll probably be here closer to seven. So more than likely, we'll have to just shuffle around items and do items B and C before we get to item A. But I don't think we need to actually do any kind of formal motion on that, do we, Jeanette? Just a little heads up, so. So with that in mind.
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Councilmember Feldman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dybek?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Aye.
And Councilmember newcomer?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, item five, Consent Agenda. Just items A through C on the consent agenda. And then we also did have a new addition that was given to us just earlier today, and that is going to become item 5D on the consent agenda, which is motion to accept the resignation of Matt Farim from the position of Public Works Maintenance Worker 1 for the city of Long Lake. So everybody should have that in front of them. So I will make a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda with adding this item 5D to the consent agenda. Second. Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Councilmember Feldman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dybek?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Councilmember Qualley?
Aye.
All right, and Councilmember newcomer?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, motion passes unanimously. Item six, Open Correspondence. Open Correspondence is an item on the agenda during which the public may address the city council. No formal action is taken by the city council, and comments should be limited to five minutes or less. And open correspondence may also be emailed to city staff by noon on the date of the meetings. And good evening. We have someone for open correspondence. Please state your name and address.
Thank you very much for having me, Mayor and city council members, and Todd. I am here on, Jane Davidson. I live at 1020 O Long Lake Road, here in Long Lake. And, but I'm here tonight on behalf of the Long Lake Waters Association, which is a nonprofit that was formed in 2017. And our mission is to, in collaboration with the cities of Long Lake, Medina, and Orno, and the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, to foster clean water in the Long Lake Creek sub watershed of the Minnehaha Creek larger watershed. And we've been working very diligently on getting a funding for a planning of what to do about our waters in this watershed, which you probably are aware are severely degraded. The Long Lake itself, since I moved here in 2012, has moved from a lake C grading to a lake D grading. And so it's really time for some projects. And the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District has started working on their long-range plan and doing some feasibility studies for some projects in Long Lake. And they're hopefully going to start on a smaller project in a pond on County Road 6 to put filter in. But we're seeing continued degradation of the lake. Long Lake Waters is, has, you know, over 100 members from the community, some who live on lakes, some who do not. And we're receiving a number of emails from those members asking for additional information, asking what kind of action plan is taking place. And even though Minnehaha Creek Watershed District has met with the cities, particularly, I think, Todd, newcomer came to represent the city as liaison to Long Lake Waters Association, and we were there. But that's a relatively small group. And so Long Lake Waters has organized a community meeting that will be held on Tuesday, October 28. It will, we originally scheduled it on the 21st, but when we recognized that you had a city council meeting, we changed it, so we hope that you'll come. It will be held in the Orno City Hall, large meeting area, so to accommodate a number of people. From about 5:00 to 5:30, we'll have a social hour and give people a chance to congregate, meet their neighbors. And then at 5:30, we have a presentation by the new project manager at Minnehaha Creek Watershed District to oversee the projects in this area, to give us an overview of what the state of the water quality is, provide some data, hopefully, and then move on to what kind of projects they believe, based on their planning, is, are the most efficacious to clean up the water over the long period of time, and give you an update on that. But I think that primarily, this is an opportunity for citizens to come and have a conversation with the leaders of the various communities and the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District to voice their concerns, ask questions. And so it should be a very informative meeting. And we, I'm here tonight to encourage you to come. We'd particularly like to have the mayors there, if possible, but all the city council members. I know you have to make some kind of arrangements to be someplace. So I'm hoping that you can do that. And so that's really my mission. We're putting out the word. I know Jeanette is probably going to put it on the listserv. We're doing mass mailing. She'll see signs out on the street. We're hoping to get a good turnout. So I've left you some of the flyers, if you need a physical reminder. And then Jeanette has additional copies, so thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jane.
Jeanette, can we get that noticed?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Can we get that noticed for council?
Quorum notice?
Oh, yes. Already of note.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Figured you'd add.
Thank you very much.
So thanks, Jane. Thanks for coming.
So that's an interesting picture.
Yeah, that's, that's not very pleasant looking, is it?
Is that what you were referring to with the green color?
I got videos and pictures I can show you.
All right, looks like a good event, so try to make that available as well, and hopefully others can join. All right, with that, we will move on to items, regular business, item seven. And why don't we start with 7B, reschedule November 20th, or November 4th, 2025 city council meeting. Jeanette, you want to kick this one off?
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. Tuesday, November 4th, is a general election day in Minnesota. And although we, as a city, don't have any elections, because it is an election day in Minnesota, statute requires that our meeting be rescheduled. We can't have public meetings on the same night as an election. So with that, we are recommending the council make a motion to reschedule that regularly scheduled meeting to either Monday, November 3rd, or Wednesday, November 5th.
All right. So anyone have any conflicts on that Monday or Wednesday?
I'd prefer Monday.
All right, we got a vote for Monday. That works with me. No conflicts. Am I in? One minute.
What were the dates again? Monday, November 3rd, or Wednesday, November 5th.
So is the 3rd okay? Councilmember newcomer, Monday, the 3rd?
Either one of those worked for me. There's a, I believe there's still a fire advisory board on the 5th, correct?
Ah.
Those aren't usually on Mon, that's probably on the 3rd. I don't think those are usually on, I think they're usually on Mondays.
Okay.
But they're usually, yeah, that's a good point. What time do they start at? 5 o'clock?
No, they're usually on Wednesdays.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking, I was thinking the Relief Association. My apologies. Okay, so that's usually at.
Either way, I think it's during the day, so.
It's usually at 4 o'clock.
Okay, so that shouldn't, that won't affect it then?
I can do it either.
All right. Do you want to make a motion for Monday then, John, or?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reschedule our November 4th, 2025 city council meeting to November 3rd, 2025.
All right, I'll second that. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Councilmember Feldman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dybek?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Qualley, and Councilmember newcomer?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. So Monday, the 3rd it is. Thank you, Jeanette. All right, and we will move on to item 7C, approved proposal from iWork Systems Inc. for an e-permitting software application. Jeanette, again.
Thank you, Mayor. I have been looking into, well, I think in general, we've been recognizing that we need to start embracing technology and efficiency as a city to the best of our ability while looking for cost-efficient ways to do that. And I've really been spending kind of the last two years soliciting quotes and looking into various e-permitting solutions. And as I was reaching out to them, oftentimes, the quote came back a little bit discouragingly high. And then while I was in the middle of researching some of these, and in some cases quoting them more than once, hoping I might get better results with a different representative, you never know. I actually was contacted by iWork, iWork Systems, Inc. They are geared a little bit more towards smaller to medium cities and jurisdictions, but they have a variable, very comparable permitting application that I was really very impressed with. And this has actually been kind of a longer negotiation process than you might realize, because in order to try to achieve some even more advantageous pricing, I also had connected them with Metro West Inspection Services to see if maybe they would be able to be a solution for all of their cities. They did walk down that path. Metro West inspections, you know, a lot of their cities just weren't quite ready to make the leap. But we, especially with our location in such proximity to the metro, I am getting demands for e-permitting and a more, a stronger, more secure online, you know, e-payment system all the time. There used to be a time where the contractors were saying, oh, you know, I'm really glad you haven't switched from paper. Now the contractors are saying, when are you going to get an online system? Because a lot of them are even doing it from their phones for things like reroufs and window replacements, you know, the quick, quicker and easier permits. So although Metro West didn't move forward, our continued negotiations with iWork were fruitful, and they came back with a quote for 4,500 a year for the first three years, no limit on the number of users, which was a little unique, because some of the other permitting solutions we looked into had caps on, you know, five users for, you know, 13,500 a year. Well, in our particular situation, when we use contract inspectors and, you know, myself, it's, you know, if we want our planning consultant to be able to look at applications as well and review plans, that becomes a lot of users. So to have one with unlimited users like that for a small municipality at a reasonable fee was really a very pleasant, pleasant surprise. There would be a one-time 3,000 setup and training fee. After the first three-year period, the pricing proposal indicates that service fees could increase in subsequent years, but would not increase more than 5% per year. Fortunately, although this is verbal and not in a document, the sales representative that I've been working with, as well as one of the technical support team that I've been asking questions of, both kind of shared that in their very long-term history with the company. They had not found a reason with smaller municipalities to actually need to increase that. So that was a pleasant development. The software would allow us to take building, plumbing, and HVAC permits online, but also would be able to use, be used for some of our other permits, like accessory structures, more than likely right-of-way permits and signed permits. I think we'd, you know, continue to explore the functionality to make the most of it. It's really, I've seen a lot of demonstrations now, and I've looked at a lot of other municipalities portals. There's a lot of customization available. There's some great reporting functions that are available that are going to, that would save me from a lot of monthly spreadsheets and submission to the county, because the county could actually log in and just receive the data. In fact, the residential assessor that we work in Long Lake worked with iWork when he was working with the city of Shorewood, and had a very positive experience with it. He said it's really easy to navigate. And I contacted a couple of cities, Shorewood, Elko, New Market. I actually spoke to Lonsdale as well after I submitted this report, just to kind of ask them about their experiences, their impressions of the software, if there were any, let the buyer beware cautions that they might be able to share with me behind the scenes. And I did not tell iWork I would be looking into that. I just kind of did a little Googling myself. And I was really pleased to receive nothing but positive feedback. It, very positive, actually. Shorewood was one example. They've actually been an iWork client for a number of years now. They really like the user-friendly features of it.
Can you customize it? Like, for instance, like you said, if it's used for like sign, signage, would our code be on it? And would it have to kind of, could you customize it so it could look at? Or does it have to be?
Unfortunately, given our technical situation this evening, I wish I was able to bring up an example portal and show it to you. It kind of follows a bit of a standard format, where you might have like a top section that would be searching for permit history. You could search by permit number, by address, by date range, by contractor, number of different search criteria. They are, as part of the setup fee, they would be able to incorporate my spreadsheet of permit records for this year, for 2025. So we'd be looking at 2025 data in forward. We, each section can be customized in like the language that you have and the links that you have. I think ultimately, a lot of it, you know, we might link back to our website. But in the building permit section, there's going to be like a standard electronic application form linked to the left, if you can envision that. And then a series of links in the middle and some instructions. And those links will be to handouts that help inform design. And then right, just a, you know, a few more instructions, like a, you know, 1 through 4, 1 through 5 kind of thing. And I think I'm envisioning, in fact, I've already been working a little bit on layout, because I'm optimistic and overly excited, to be quite honest with you. I'm envisioning that we would lay it out with permit search right up top, followed by a building permit application, the plumbing and HVAC applications, and then zoning and other permits. And we might be able to take it even further than I'm aware of. But until I start to see more and more of the form templates, you know, I'll have a better idea just how far we can really do it. This also rolls in an e-payment solution as well. So that's wonderful. Our inspectors would be scheduling inspections through it. We can issue permit cards through it. And the cool part about the permit cards is that they can be printed, and it includes a QR code specific to the permit that's been issued. So when our inspector's out in the field, he can just take his tablet, scan that QR code from the permit, and bring up all the information from the permit card and the plan sets and all the links. It'll all be right there for him. So there's some really cool, impressive features when you're looking at a solution for a city of our size. In visiting with them too, in part probably because I was trying to make the Metro West connection, the standard contract offers 100 gig of storage, and they rolled in an extra 100 gig at no additional charge.
Can I ask a question? So if the contract were to, after three years, we decide to go with a different firm, maybe for whatever reason?
The data is ours.
The data is ours, okay.
Standardized format?
The data is ours. They export the data. We would have it.
You'd have to port it? You could port it somewhere?
We, we could, yep. And there are a number of different varieties in which they're willing to provide that data. But as long as, and that was one reason why ultimately I, at first, I was kind of considering Metro West's version, but it was actually under that contract, because it was going to be servicing so many different cities. It wasn't going to have quite as many customized features and all the other permits and all the specific links that I think are relevant to permit issuance and help inform project design and application. Yeah, it's, it's a surprisingly thorough solution for a small city, beginning to end. Has some financial reporting features as well as permit activity reporting. Metro West is already using it with, city of Lonsdale is one of their customers. So they've already had a little bit of familiarity with it. At the end of the day, I think we wanted more customization than what a group solution was going to offer. And a lot of their cities weren't quite ready to make the leap.
Yeah, so there's kind of general modernization, but like how, can you estimate how many hours a week this would save you?
Oh, my goodness. I think it would surprise me. Just to provide an example, because this is, this is a good way to make this relatable. Right now, if I have some, if I have a contractor or homeowner email me a permit, I have to print out the permit, calculate the permit fee. Then I have to calculate what the permit fee would be in addition to the 2.95% credit card transaction fee. I have to send them an email and say, okay, you know, here, here is your permit fee. This is what would be due with the credit card transaction fee attached as a credit card authorization form. They complete that credit card authorization form. They email it back to me. I have to print it. I have to manually enter that into PSN, our payment service network. I print a receipt. I assign the permit number, scan in the permit, send it to them, make a couple copies for our inspector, for here, there, and everywhere. And that's a typical permit transaction for something like a reroute.
And then you put it in the drawer.
And then I put it in a drawer. I put it in a property file. And then I have to wait until eventually I get it back with an inspection report, at which point I've, you know, already entered it into a spreadsheet, then I update the status on it.
So it's more than three hours a week?
Oh, yes.
So it pays for itself?
Yes, actually. I find it fascinating, because I think of like a basic reroute permit, and it would result all of that backing and forthing to essentially receive, click, ready for accepting payment? Done.
And then you have a record of it. People can check it. It streamlines the entire process for all the players.
And as time goes on, and we accumulate more data and more permit history, it's also really going to help with, we constantly get calls from insurance agents or potential home buyers asking about a permit history on a property when there was a reroute done. So the more years of permit history you have available online, they're always looking to your website first. In fact, that's what they do. They call me and say, I looked on your website. I can't find permits. Can you tell me where to find them? I apologize. We have them in paper. Let me grab the file for you. It also involves incorporating GIS data for our parcels in Long Lake, which means that we can't receive applications for Orno and Medina. We turn away, I turn away probably three to five of those a week because of the zip code. And I turned away two today.
Or my mailman comes from Long Lake.
Another benefit as well is it's cloud-based. And so right now, Jeanette is the only person in the office that does permitting. So some of our vendors right now, if she's ill or takes, you know, an hour off, and they can't get a permit, tend to get a little angry. And so this would alleviate that issue. It is cloud-based, so they could.
And then.
And a lot easier.
And again, the data is ours, and it's standardized formats that we can export to the next service solution.
Yes.
Nice.
So I, I have been so impressed with it. I've been working with them for months. They haven't, I actually kind of wondered when I came back at them after all of this time had passed and talking with Metro West, and I wondered if I'd come back, you know, a couple of months later, and they'd be like, eh, maybe we're going to readjust that and bring that contract fee up. They didn't. They held to the original quote and then offered me an extra 100 gig of storage. So I, I'm pleased, and the feedback from the folks that I spoke with as references praised their customer support and said that the product, the application, is continuing to be updated, and there's little improvements all the time. And that was nice to hear. So it means I'm not just buying a static product if the council approves this.
And I will make a comment as far as funding. Correct me if I'm wrong. Jeanette has worked out with them that we could pay the $3,000 setup fee in the 2025 budget year. I verified that the line item currently has $2,500 remaining in that line item to use. So the 3,000 would come out of the 2025 budget, and then I would just properly budget for additional software of the 4,500 in 2026. So the budget impact that this would have would be $500.
They also said that even though we wouldn't necessarily pay our first year of operation until the 2026 year if we chose, if we're ready to go, we can just launch.
Start using.
So they're not going to hold us up for that. They understand. They seem to have a solid awareness of the needs of small cities. I find that nothing I've thrown at them has been a curveball, and that's, that's been nice to hear.
So was this in the budget, like the 4,500 for software?
It was not. It was not. We, I just got lucky that there's still $2,500 remaining in the budget. And so when Jeanette, when Jeanette was looking into this, we were looking at how to make it fiscally responsible. As soon as we were able to do the 3,000 setup fee this year, I said that would work out really well, because like I said, we are coming in a little under budget for software expenses for 2025. So that is, that's how that.
All right, great. Anyone wish to make a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve the pricing proposal for iWork Systems, Inc. for a community development e-permitting software solution to authorize the city clerk to execute an agreement for iWork's applications and services.
Nice. I'll second that. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, starting with Councilmember Feldman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dybek?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Councilmember Qualley?
Aye.
And Councilmember newcomer?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, if it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, if it passes unanimously, great. Thanks for your hard research on that and glad you found a, a fit that you're happy about and it's certainly reasonably priced as compared to uh, all or most of their competitors here, it looks like, so.
Well, it looks like you're gonna be busy too.
Yeah, and that, that's the thing is, you know, this, that permit transaction process I described, I can, it's hard to quantify because you never know in a week if you're gonna get five permits or if you're gonna get ten to fifteen. Oh my goodness, I can, I, I have a feeling that I'm gonna, you know, get to the end of a busy, you know, re-roofing cycle as you get into fall and I'm gonna be like, wow, how, how, that was so much easier than last year and it's a really great time to be working on implementing it with an election year next year. It's gonna be like a, just a really great way to start making the most of our time. And, um, speeding up the transaction for our customers and, and making it more efficient and more secure. I think they're gonna be thrilled, so I'm happy that, uh, and, and thankful for the council's support and, and letting us move forward with this. I know it wasn't a budgeted activity, but I think it's, it's gonna make a very positive change.
Great, I agree. Sounds great. All right, so let's move on to item seven D, which won't be fairly brief, but Fire Department Transition Future Fire uh, Service Update. So we and I see joint powers agreement for future, um, fire department that we hope to have begin service on January first. And tied to that are lease agreements for use of the, of the fire stations. Um, so our, our attorneys and staff continue to work on those and work out all nuances and uh, as I think I've said before, both cities are trying their best to make sure that, you know, there's a nice, um, this is, you know, gonna be for twenty or thirty years, we need to have nice rock solid language that protects both cities for that long, so that's why uh, it's taking some time, but it's very productive and going, everything's going in the, in the right direction, so. Um, anyone else have any comments they wanna make about that? We'll, uh, we're very much, a lot of work on it in the last couple of weeks with that, a lot of discussions going on, so, uh, very positive, just, uh, these things take time.
Just wanna thank the council members that have been involved in the negotiations because I think it's taken a lot of time, so really appreciate all of that. And I'm glad it came before the full council in the work session, just so, seems like been a lot of work, um, but it's nice to see the, not the end product, but.
Close to the end, hopefully.
Close to the end, progress.
Thank you, thanks, appreciate you. All right, so we'll wrap that one up and I don't think you're hearing quite yet, so why don't we move on? Eight other business, talk slow.
Jokes, I don't have any.
All right, um, Councilmember Divak.
I don't have anything either.
Banners, nothing with banners?
Decorations.
We need to get moving on banners if we're gonna have something for this next summer.
I do, um, I was presented with a local vendor. He has given me a sample of some vendors at, I apologize, some banners that his company does. Um, and so I do have his information prepared. Look into it a little bit. Have a contact and a.
Uh, I think they printed our.
Right, but we need still.
Correct, yep, and we um, what the council is looking at mentioned before, if it's to go whether it's community art or, um, that might be, some designated funds may be able to cover the banners. It's just, the council would like to see on the.
Okay, I, I know we talked about uh, submissions, um, like a contest of some sort, um.
Even through the grade schools, like through an art teacher, uh, I asked.
Yeah, that's a good idea. It's my kids.
I did, I did have one other thing. To, um, every year, but, um, to like Orono has a Brian.
Oh.
That. Do, do we have statistics on how much that reduces the overall salt issues we use? I mean, I, I just don't. All I've heard is that fit our particular roads, um, and how we use them and whatnot, but I didn't know if that's something that we should talk about before we're.
We've brought that up a couple of times now of years and the.
Infrastructure is expensive to start, that I know of.
Yeah, not, and, and that's not the only part of it.
Narrow window to.
It.
I know it's tough to.
I got the impression that one, at least for now, is a little more on the cost prohibitive side. Um, doesn't mean we can't ask Sean if he wants to look into it again, a little further, um. We can certainly bring the subject up again and see what he has to say.
And as, as like our street sweeper goes, is there some amount of collection that that does or is it, does it all ultimately end up in the stormwater as well?
I'm not certain on that. We'd have to have Sean come chat about that a little bit.
Yeah, I think they don't, I believe he dumps it back at City Hall and then takes it away, you know, from, from there somehow, but.
Okay.
Um, that's gotta be helping with our, with, you know, he's, he's out there on that quite frequently, at least in my neighborhood, uh, so I'm, gotta imagine that's helping, but and maybe there's some partnership now that we, you know, we have good, good relations with Orono, maybe there's, you know, some way we can partner on that and pay, pay them a fee or something. Yeah, they, oh, I'm just talking about the Brian.
The Brian.
All briner, okay.
Yeah, yeah, you know, for, for some streets or something. There's a lot of possibilities because they have the hardware there and and, um, I just wonder if there's a multifaceted set of solutions that might be at the end of this somehow, but brainstorming. Yeah, yeah, it's a good one. Did we fi- did we finish the flag conversation or did?
I have no, I will get back to you with some information on that.
I actually have even more information on that already, so we can chat about that one.
Okay, great. All right, why don't we put a pause to other business then and then we'll come back to that in, in a minute because we have our, our distinguished guest here, so. Good evening, Senator, please.
Hi, everybody.
And we'll move on to item seven A, which is legislative updates by Senator Ian Johnson Stewart of Senate District Forty-five. Welcome, thanks for joining us.
Thanks, Charlie.
Yeah.
Well, I decided to go to church deacons, which was a big mistake. I was supposed to have a conflict and then the conflict got canceled, so my good, uh, conscience got the best of me, so here I am. Um, I do have many presentations I can give. Uh, I think Carolyn sent you something. Otherwise, I'm happy just to give you an update and answer questions. That's typically what I do, but I can, I have lots in my pocket.
I actually did not receive any presentation, so if you'd like to.
Well, let me ask this, what are you guys interested in? Um, I am prepared, I'm just not loaded up, but I can give you what I gave Excelsior City Council last night. Um, when I presented at Deep Haven recently, I talked for an hour and a half on property taxes, so that could be. I've also talked about bonding, um, and I don't really need a presentation, I'm happy to just converse if you're okay with that.
Yeah, that sounds good. I think we brainstormed some ideas with Carolyn and just, uh, the roads is a frequent topic, but which is related to bonding. And then, yeah, so anything I wanna address about property taxes, um, I know, you know, and the Senator does a good job about putting together, has put together a group of mayors, we meet on a regular basis, monthly or so. You know, there's hot topics there like e-bikes and thank goodness, that hasn't been a really big issue in our, our community, but almost everything else that, you know, is brought up by other communities in your district are, you know, an issue here, whether it's um, the water quality issues, so we, we, we got a banner, our, our Jane behind us gave us this banner of, or this, uh, photograph of our lake. And former, you know, University of Minnesota faculty.
Doctor Davidson and I built a house together on the Washington Mall.
Oh my gosh.
Doesn't matter that, I remember that, that was, um, sixteen years ago, so it's good.
Wow, wow.
And so am I. And I'm still teaching at the university, so that was part of a solar competition with the Department of Energy and she brings huge expertise in that area and so I'm happy to see you again. Um, are you still in Edina?
Uh, no, I'm your.
I'm your Senator now, so. Anyway, well, here's what I will, I'll just give you a brief update and then, um, as, boy, you had two college professors come talk to you tonight, boy, this could have gone into five or six hours, right? But, um, it won't. All right, so here's what I will just tell you, um, Senate District, uh, Forty-five, of course, includes Long Lake. And I was just recently elected as your Senator last November during a special election. I don't know how long your terms have been, but, um, Kelly Morrison, of course, resigned to run for Congress and then I was elected, uh, just about a year ago. So our Senate District includes fifteen cities, including Long Lake, Orono, et cetera, pretty, definitely any lake, any community that touches Lake Minnetonka, plus St. Boniface. So we go all the way out to the western border of Hannipin County, uh, so that includes Minatrista and all the cities between here and there. Um, half of Minnetonka, so my husband and I live north of three ninety-four in Minnetonka, so the, the north half, north of Highway Seven is in our Senate District. And then the south, uh, half is in Senator Swadzinski's district. So as Charlie said, we have, uh, fifteen, uh, communities that are represented and one of the things that I felt was really important because we have such diversity of size, you know, um, Greenwood has, what, six hundred, I think, Min- Minnetonka Beach has seven hundred. Uh, there, a lot of these communities are very, um, small geographically with a very large kind of property tax base and so property taxes are one of the issues that the mayors and I work on, but what I thought was really important, especially around infrastructure, so that's kind of my, my big thing, I'm a civil engineer. And really that's why I ran for Senate, was to advocate for infrastructure, but what happens in some of these very small communities that share infrastructure because of the way our region was developed is they get kind of the short end of the stick when it comes to funding opportunities and resources. So I'm just, I mean, honestly, Long Lake has pretty good, um, water and sewer. I know that you guys are putting in a, oh, in contrast to some of the other communities, you guys are in pretty good shape. I remember last year when I was door knocking, you were lining some of your pipes just south of here with cured-in-place pipe and I know you're doing some of your roads. But I, uh, Charlie and I have talked over your bonding requests this year and we're strategizing on how best to position uh, Long Lake to get some of those bonding dollars, uh, and also through the local roads program. So, um, let's see, some of the other issues that we're working on with the mayors are, as Charlie said, e-bikes, which is actually a pretty big deal in the communities that we have where there's a core downtown like Wayzata and um, Excelsior and there's a lot of terrorism on the wheels at, in the evenings and so we're just working on issues related to speed and regulation around e-bikes. Really, property taxes is a pretty big deal, um, as uh, communities are struggling with assessments and who does their assessments, this becomes um, a stress on them, especially in communities that are more adjacent to the lake. Do you have communities or houses that are on Lake Minnetonka?
Yes, about fifteen plus homes on the lake.
And then you also have them on Long Lake, of course.
Well, that's I meant on Long Lake, I'm sorry.
But you don't have any on Lake Minnetonka, right? Yeah, I didn't think so. Orono kind of cuts you off, but, so, um, this is an issue not just in our district and we're trying to make it more of a statewide issue and partnering with communities in Brainerd and Duluth even, and some of those other places. So property taxes are an issue, not just the rise in property taxes, but how we might be able to provide relief to longtime homeowners that are getting priced out of their homes and also how we can, um, get a handle on the assessment and fair assessments.
Can I ask you a question? Because you're the state level and the property taxes are coming from the local, local level. How, what can you do in the state to kind of control property taxes?
Well, the state.
Give us a bang for our buck when we pay the property taxes.
So individual counties are empowered to do assessments a specific way and so, um, Charlie, you'll have to jump in and help me. You guys, do you do your own assessing or do you use Hannipin County?
Switched to Hannipin County recently.
So Hannipin County has been empowered to take over all of the communities in Hannipin County. Um, so that's an empowerment that comes from the state. Uh, but then what they actually wanted us to do was require, not just empower, but require individual communities to hand over their assessment to Hannipin County, which was a problem for some communities like Minnetonka, Greenwood, et cetera. They didn't want to do that, they want to keep their own assessors, so.
Question, is that goo- better to have Hannipin County do it? Is that because you think it's gonna be a level playing field or is it gonna, will it be better to have it done at the local level?
Well, it depends. Some communities want it done at the local community level, which, you know, Long Lake, you guys have made your decision on that. The reason Hannip- the reason that some communities don't want it done at the local level is because they feel like their assessors are more familiar with their housing stock and more familiar with their homes in general, so they feel like Hannipin County is a little bit out of, out of touch and so they might overvalue some of the homes in their neighborhoods. Now, the challenge though becomes that Hannipin County already assesses for that service. And so if a city like, um, Minnetonka wants to do its own assessment, where the state comes in is that I live in Minnetonka, now am I paying twice? I'm paying Hannipin County to not assess my property and I'm paying Minnetonka to assess my property, I'm still paying twice. And so the cities have to ask for state, or the cities wanted to block Hannipin County's requirement that individ- that each city goes through them for their assessment. So the way it, the way it is right now, I think, Charlie, is the counties each can assess Han- um, Minnetonka, which is not fair because Minnetonka then gets double, you know, in effect, pays twice for assessment on each house. One that it doesn't do and one that it does do. So it's an individual, I feel like it's something that cities should be allowed to do individually and decide what's best for them. A city like Greenwood, they have a very, well, Tom Fletcher, their mayor, feels like they have very um, unique housing stock, which they do. Um, Deep Haven is another very unique community, Minnetonka Beach, you know, a lot of these communities have unique properties where you could be driving down the road and there's, you know, a little cottage that was built in nineteen thirty-five and has a very small square footage and then right next door is an eight thousand square foot mansion. If this house sells for five million dollars, you know, how much does it really impact the price of this house right next door? And so they want to retain that control.
So what are they doing in the state? Just because I know the issue came before this council, um, it was a, the price of having Hannipin County do it was a lot cheaper. Was it free?
It was zero.
It was zero, so that was very attractive.
I think it's assessed based on number of, I don't know how that charge happens, but I know it was not free for Minnetonka. So Minnetonka, Edina, St. Louis Park, Bloomington, I think these are some of the communities that are pushing back. You guys have a small population and maybe, you know, everything in state government has a formula, so, and I'm just not familiar with what that formula was. I would trust that you guy, again, if you want to bring it up later, but I would trust that for Long Lake and for other communities of your size, it, it's very well maybe a great deal for you to have Hannipin County do your assessment, which was the message that Hannipin County made last year when they were trying to maintain this ability to assess every property in the, uh, in their own county. And county, again, this is not my area of expertise, but cities like Minnetonka said, no, it's not a great deal, we don't want that. So that's where the state comes in and, uh, we got involved with legislation. I'm sure it'll come again. Uh, we kind of tabled it until this next legislative session. But the other areas around property tax reform have to do with relief for, um, you know, older homeowners, relief for people whose property taxes maybe go up a certain amount in a short period. For people whose property tax goes up a certain percentage in a short period. Those kinds of things are all things we can do at the state level through the tax committee to provide, um, tax relief for people that live in this district and, like I said, we're trying to expand it to include other areas that have, you know, downtown Minneapolis, areas around lakes, Linden Hills, et cetera, Edina. Those are some other areas where people might not have done anything to their home and yet they see it doubling value even over just, you know, a few years, so it's really a hardship on, on some people.
Yeah.
And then there's other things we can do at the state level around, um, deductions and tax relief, et cetera. So. So property tax is a big deal. And luckily, we have several mayors who are, come to that issue from a professional perspective. That was what they did in their jobs either before they retired or are currently involved. And so I think we're well represented in working on those issues from a regional perspective. So e-bikes and property tax and what else are we working on, Charlie?
Water, your water quality encourages to
Yep, water quality, invasive species. I teach in the University of Minnesota's Department of Civil Engineering where we're doing a lot of research on wake boats and invasive species. I've kind of tabled that issue. Frankly, it's pretty contentious. And I think that the, the areas that we want to focus on, take priority. It's really, you know, as the only civil engineer, I get a lot of requests to cover things really specific to infrastructure and things around like property surveys and land monuments and septic tanks and pavement and all of that's really important. Regionally, there's another issue that's very important, which is housing. And I, did your city council follow the missing middle bill in the housing legislation that was up this year?
Not sure about the missing middle one. That's, that's not the one that has to do with zoning, is it?
That's the one that we just voted down. Yep, it was called the missing middle because there's a very big need for middle income housing. And we had a bunch of bills that were before us over the last two years. Two years ago, before I was back in the Senate, those bills were voted down because they were extremely directive, directive to all communities across the state, kind of at, like with a broad stroke of what they have to do in order to accommodate more affordable housing. So then that was voted down two years ago. And then this year, we received another slate of bills that had been tweaked. But still, many of the mayors, especially in our Senate District, were opposed to them because they were
Local zoning preemption.
Yeah, lots of local zoning preemption without money for cities to figure out how to fit these new zoning requirements into their statutes and their policies. Also, many, just, I was on that committee that had to vote that, that chose to vote that down. I won't say had, but a lot of the issues relate to accessory dwelling units, to multifamily housing, which just really doesn't fit many of our communities like Tonka Bay, Minnetonka Beach, Deep Haven, Excelsior, where there really isn't an opportunity to build multifamily housing. And yet there were some requirements in this legislation that would require that. Also, some communities like Minnetonka Beach, every single, every single house in that city is within two hundred feet of Lake Minnetonka. And so some of those zoning requirements were in direct conflict with DNR allowances. And so because of that, there was just a lot of problems for our cities. And now the mayors with leadership from City of Minnetonka are looking at putting together a package of more palatable, I would say more reasonable, again, that's a judgment on my part, but more reasonable zoning changes that might be more from a regional approach. So for example, in City of Wayzata, there recently was some development that had to do with building some multifamily housing apartments. And based on the funding, so to your question, is it Cavale?
Oh, Qualley.
Qualley, oh, sorry. I guess I knew that, but I, I forgot. Anyway, the, the state has some funding options that helps cities develop, you know, TIF increment funding and, or tax increment funding or, or financing or some other ways that the state can get involved with some of the money for doing some of these developments. With that money comes some requirements. And so in the city of Wayzata, for example, there was some requirements to develop a certain number of affordable housing units, which just isn't reasonable in Wayzata because every, you know, square foot of land that they build anything on is extremely expensive. And so Mayor Mullen worked with City of Plymouth to do some creative financing. I'm not sure what he did, but he was able to negotiate, let's, I think it was five times as many units for the same price because they were built in Plymouth. And so there is some work like that that we can do, which addresses the reality that some neighborhoods, just based on where they are, it's just not reasonable to build affordable housing. But very close by Plymouth, for example, or for you guys, I would say Maple Plain is probably much more affordable. I don't know, is Long Lake, what are your housing?
We do have some kind of, as you said, the middle. We have middle.
Yeah, you do, I know. I door knocked all around here and there was some very nice, but smaller, what I would consider to be affordable units.
We're also fully developed. And that to me is, there's a couple of struggles with these local zoning preemption bills. First of all, cities, there are a lot of cities like Long Lake, we are fully developed. We do not have vacant land. So to impose a housing goal upon a community that's fully developed essentially implies that you're going to take housing away
Yeah.
to put up more housing. That's not reasonable. And additionally, those housing goals, again, in a fully developed community, we're not necessarily prepared to add that kind of density to our infrastructure. You know, the, the community was built as a small town. Adding five hundred units of residential is, we're already in a position, actually, where we're looking at a sanitary sewer lining project for essentially almost the whole town because our, our INI is rising rapidly and there's a cost with that.
Make council bills or?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so the local zoning preemption bills, you know, I, I just, I continue to feel like one thing that I really wish got across a little better is one size does not fit all in the metropolitan area. What applies to the Bloomingtons and Edinas does not apply here.
Or what applies to downtown Minne, or northeast Minneapolis or South St. Paul, et cetera. Yeah, I hear you. Well, we just
Unfortunately, when they do developments too, I think sometimes the houses that they're taking away are going to be more of your affordable houses.
Right.
To build multi-unit complexes, which may not necessarily be affordable. So I think sometimes big development does take away what we're trying to accomplish.
And who profits on that? Like sometimes I wonder who profits from that?
If it's the developers.
Yeah, is it the developers?
I totally agree. So we're in the middle of doing the bonding tours right now. In fact, tomorrow morning, we leave for Grand Marais. So the bonding tours are where the bonding committee members get on a bus and we go visit. And remind me to talk about bonding tours, so somebody has to remind me of that. We recently were down in Rochester where the city had a huge undeveloped block. And they have very good housing staff and they had developed a proposal to add five hundred and sixty-five units. That's a lot of housing. But the challenge was there was just one thirty-inch sewer pipe going to this property and one, I don't even want to say what size, a very small water main, because it used to be one house, right? And so one of the things that I'm working on is expanding. We have a fund to accommodate that kind of thing, because I think that's exactly what we're looking for. Where there's an empty space and somebody wants to develop it, that's a great opportunity for mixed-use multifamily. And this was affordable housing, but the city of Rochester just couldn't afford that infrastructure. Not just the sewer pipes, but also there's the roads too, so.
And the school, who, if they have kids, where do the kids go to school?
Yeah, I don't, they didn't ask us for money on that, because bonding, so let's talk about the bonding tour real briefly. So bonding requests, and you guys have yours in. And I think we're set to go once we adjust some numbers a little bit. Charlie and I just met about this on Monday. So the bonding requests are coming in right now. And bonding committees members are going out to tour these sites. Our bonding tour will be in the end, at the end of October. And I just want you to know, Long Lake's project will not be on the bonding tour. However, I will talk about it in Minnetonka Beach. So we have, we have already put in our request, and I think I told Charlie this, but I want us to meet at Minnetonka Beach under the water tower project to highlight how much investment so many of our communities have already made in their infrastructure. The reality is the fifteen communities in Senate District forty-five, we do not get very much bonding money. That's because there's this
Formula?
No, it's not a formula. It is a, here's the money, here's the money. It is very subjective, which is what I want to talk about. But it is, because it's subjective, there might be an idea that, well, they don't need the money. They have a good property tax base or they have, you know, high-income people who can afford it. But many of our communities frankly have put in a huge investment into their own infrastructure without any help from the state. So we're going to highlight that at Minnetonka Beach. And we're going to try to showcase the fact that out here, it's not all petrillion-dollar mansions. I mean, I live in a one-story Rambler that we bought thirty years ago. I know Charlie lives in a house similar to mine, because I door knocked there a couple of years ago.
And you just go right down the center by the church. There's a lot of single-family homes.
Yeah, absolutely. So we want to highlight that. Now, I just want you to know, though, just because you're not on the bonding tour doesn't mean anything. The bonding allocation turns out to be very subjective. And so I told Excelsior City Hall or City Council last night, when we get to that point in the session, which will be next May, do not give up. And I'll be communicating with my mayors to let them know who they have to call. Bond, there's two ways that the state can fund capital investment. And so the state can only fund through the Capital Investment Committee hard capital. So things like buildings and streets and pavement and pipes and water towers. But they, but, and when I said buildings, they don't necessarily have to be government buildings. We can fund nonprofit buildings as well, but it has to be something that is hard capital. And, or, yeah, a capital investment. We can choose to fund that in two ways. One is with general obligation bonds. So when we say we're on the bonding tour or I'm on the bonding committee, when we choose to fund that, this year we had seven hundred million dollars as our budget from the governor. And we are given categories of what we're allowed to fund. So this year, we didn't do any local projects other than through the Public Facilities Authority, which is an agency program that Long Lake, maybe, maybe you guys could get some money through that. I'm not a hundred percent sure. But so this year, we were able to bond, bond seven hundred million with general obligation bonds, which by state law require a supermajority. So in a year where we choose to fund those projects with bonds, we have to get sixty votes in the Senate and we have to get a hundred and twenty votes in the House. So that is this year, we're going to get about one point three billion in bonds. So I think chances are good that we'll get money for all of our communities. And I'm going to work really hard on that. We will need to be pressuring Andrew Myers and Patty Aitken. You guys have Andrew, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you'll need to be pressuring Andrew to make sure he votes for that bonding bill. I think he will, but I'm just telling you. And you'll have to pressure me, but of course, I'll vote for the bonding bill. We also have an opportunity to, to fund capital investment through cash. And you may remember in twenty twenty-three, when we had that big eighteen billion dollar surplus, like two billion of that went to capital investment cash. So we have a huge backlog of communities just like yours who need help with their mostly water and sewer and streets. And so two billion dollars of that was funded through cash, which only requires a simple majority. So hopefully, we'll have some cash this year also, in which case we can fund, you know, whatever is eligible and whatever we think won't get approved by a supermajority. We can peel that out and cover that with cash. But that will happen next May and I'll make sure that Charlie knows who you guys should be calling and putting the pressure on. You'll know if Long Lake is in the bonding bill and for how much. But it's an incredibly subjective thing, so pressuring
Squeaky Will gets the, the money?
Yep, and pressuring Andrew Myers, who, you know, he is in, he's a Republican in a Democratic district, frankly. And so his party will want him to get reelected. He will, they will want him to look good to his community, which is Mound, Minatrista, St. Bonnie, Long Lake, Orano, all those communities that typically would vote Republican, they want to keep him seated. And so just based on a true numbers thing, make sure we pressure Andrew to get, we're going to leverage that, Charlie.
So general obligation bonds, what are the, what are the requirements around there? Like, what are the terms for, if you get the bonding money, do you, does the city pay a certain amount back?
No, it's just gifted to you.
It's just gifted, okay.
Mm-hmm. So there's other opportunities for funding. As I said, you guys might, we might, we're going to explore the local roads program. Oh, I do have a presentation on that. Maybe I can just send it to you so I don't bore you with that. But we did look into how we go about requesting money through the local roads program. This year, we put, I don't know, forty-seven million, I think, into local roads, which you guys would be eligible for. So I can work with Charlie and maybe Jeanette to get that application together. But that's just for roads. So we can't cover water and sewer with that. And then frankly, most of the Public Facilities Authority money is for treatment. And so your bonding request is for distribution. It's for the pipes, not necessarily for the treatment. And so PFA money wouldn't cover your distribution. So pipes have to be covered. Mostly pipes are covered by, that's my phone dinging, I think.
I think it's up here somewhere.
Anyway, sorry. It doesn't bother me if it's not mine. So distribution money, we have to cover through bonding. That's really our only way to do it.
So two quick questions about that, because I met with staff this afternoon to talk about our road requests. And the first one is, would we, would we be, should we be duplicating efforts? Like, is it okay to apply for both?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. And then is like, we talked about our project is estimated about twelve million dollars for three or four streets. Is that, is it better to have that large of a project? Or is it more, make more sense to have a smaller carve-out of that? Go bigger, bigger is better?
So I'll, I'll counsel all of my mayors before we get to the bonding tour. And we already went through your handout once. So when, so you're asking for, your project is twelve point two million, correct? Of which five hundred thousand can be covered through your pavement, maintenance, funding. So you've got five hundred thousand, so that, that's one way that the city can fund that twelve point two million. In a bonding request, you're only, it's, it's not really a rule, but it is a standard practice that cities only should ask for half. And so I mentioned to Charlie that your request should be six million dollars. And I'll explain that in a minute. I am very transparent about this, so the secrets are about to be told. Because what happens, if you ask for six million, and you will be at the bonding tour, I hope, and we talk about that money, Senator Pappas will ask, well, what other funding are you looking for? And so that's when you're going to say, well, we have five hundred thousand from our own that we've set aside. We're applying for local road money. The city does have a capacity to bond, which I'm guessing you do. You don't have to offer that up too wholeheartedly, because it'd be nice if, I mean, I'm going to leave that to you guys. But that's one of your options as well. And then, and then you're going to request six million. Now, the reason I want you to ask for six million is because it is very, it's less than half. You're showing that you're asking for other money. And if there's, I just can't think of other funds that we could try for.
Is your time paid? Go ahead.
Sorry, one concern that staff had was like, we were asking for, you know, twelve million, but if we
You're not asking for twelve million.
Well, right.
You're asking for six million.
Initially, but so if we pay for six million, that would be a, that would be a bit of a financial struggle for us as well to do that in one, one set of municipal bonds or, you know, do bonding for that. So would we be committing ourselves like, oh, great?
No, no, no. So then they'll say, so these are the questions, so I'm already prepping you. Have you looked for other ways to fund this? Yes, we have five hundred thousand from our pavement management fund. We are applying for local road money and we do have the capacity to bond. Well, how much do you have, the capacity to bond? Then Charlie will say, well, you know, man, that's a, that's a big ask for a city like Long Lake. I'm not sure we have that capacity. Then Sandy will, Senator Pappas will say, could you phase the project? And we've already talked about this too. So then you will say, yes, we have, this is for three or four streets, whatever. And we've talked to our engineer that, yeah, we could do two streets if we get two million or five million or whatever. And we certainly are willing to do that. Who's your engineer?
WSB.
Yeah, so WSB knows how to fund, you know. I think it would be cheaper in general if you do it all at once, which is what you should say.
Is there any time limit that you have to use the money?
Yeah, you do have to use it within, well, you guys have never gotten bonding money, but there is, there are strings attached. You can't use it for design, so don't ask for, for it for design. You can only use it for capital investment. You can only use it for hard construction materials. So you can only use it for hard construction materials and construction activities.
Quick question. So if we were to phase it, we got, um, as you said, six million initially and we did a couple of roads, what are our chances of getting the next six million up?
Never. You'll never get more. They will only fund up to half of a project. So the way you'd have to be, um, and we saw this on the last bonding tour. We went to City of Chanhassen and I'm, I'm, I think this is good um, intelligence telling my mayors this. Senator Pappas act, and it is very subjective. This is a very powerful position for her to be able to say, who gets what? And we got back on the bus and she goes, I can't believe they asked us for, don't tell any Chanhassen people this, okay? She's like, I can't, am I like being recorded? I don't care.
We are on YouTube, yes.
She did say, I can't believe that they asked us for money on the same project. Like, it's a little bit perceived as a little bit inappropriate. Like, we already gave them three million for this project and then they invited us back. So we don't want that, we don't want that. So if you get best, I mean, best, you know, let's say you get six million dollars. Don't get your hopes up. I don't really think you're going to get six million, but we're going to ask for that. And then you have to phase the project. I will help you. We'll figure it out, but chances are very low that you're going to see money again for that same project. Um, now Long Lake might have another project. You know, Wayzetta, I got four million for that Panaway project, the boardwalk out into the lake. They got money for that in twenty twenty.
Two or three or something.
It was actually, it wasn't twenty-two because I was there then. Several years ago, and I actually think it was like twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. Now, then they asked for money for it again. And then, um, I don't think they'll ever get Panaway money. So I'm working with Mayor Mullen to come up with, well, what's another project? I mean, realistically, City of Wayzetta, they don't get money for that.
Yeah, we should let you know your camera there in case you have any secret notes on your notebook there.
Just says to follow up with Jeanette because I want to talk to you about housing. So um, if there, again, Mayor Mullen is going to ask this time around. He does need more money to finish that waterfront, but he's going to ask for money for the police station because it's a different project. So there's lots of strategies that we can use to get around it. I mean, you know.
Ours is not necessarily a want. It's more of a need.
There's lots of needs out there, lots of, yes, I hear you.
Prioritize the needs over the wants.
Yeah, so I, I totally agree with you. Um, when I, when we negotiated the bonding bill last session, the, I will have to say, very few wants made it through. And I don't even know, I honestly, if we went through the list, which I'm happy to share with you, I'll send that your way. You can see what we funded last time. I would say none of them were wants. In a year where they had two billion dollars in cash, so the year I wasn't there, but Kelly was, or Senator, uh, Representative Morrison was there, they did do some wants, things like um, community.
Panaways.
Yeah, something like that.
I'm just going to call.
Yeah, so the Panaway would be a want. Yep. But just now we, so I'll just reflect on the projects. We just were on the Southeast Minnesota tour. The vast majority of those projects were wastewater or water treatment. I mean, that is a big need. And the reason that we're seeing so many of those requested through bonding is many, many communities had their wastewater treatment plants funded in the seventies with the Clean Water Act. And so now all of those facilities are fifty years old and they're all aging out together. So you see, just, um, you see a lot of kind of patching and making do and you just can't believe what some of these awesome maintenance staff are doing to extend the life of their wastewater treatment plants. But a lot of them are just failing all together at the same time. So we are in a tough spot. Last year we, um, you guys, you know, in the metro area, we don't really rely on the Public Facilities Authority too much. Where do you guys, how do you get your water here? Do you have, like, how many wells or?
Two walls, Emily?
Correct.
And do they have manganese or anything in them? You just, you don't have any?
We do have some manganese, but we're below the threshold.
Yeah, so you just treat with.
You know, the EPA requirements right now, our drinking water report doesn't have any alarming spikes anywhere. Everything is where it belongs.
That's good. So knock on wood. You're lucky. But wastewater treatment, you guys don't really have to worry about because your waste is treated by Met Council.
We do worry about it.
We do worry about it.
Because I and I.
Well, there's I and I and our Met Council bills are unbelievable.
Right, but I mean, you don't, you're not responsible for building a plant. So certainly understand that.
Yeah.
And, and I understand I and I and I understand why it's a problem for you. Um, but this year what we were able to do for those communities that, God forbid, you shouldn't, I hope you never have to request money for that. Like Mound, who has manganese, that's why their water is undrinkable, undrinkable, we'll say it that way. But um, there used to be a cap on how much they could ask for. And then there was also um, a limit to how much money was even in that fund. So there might be six hundred, eight hundred communities on that list, but with the small amount of funding, we, you know, you know, the money ran out quickly. So what we were able to do last year, because the governor mandated that the only money that we had to spend had to go to state agency programs, the way that we were able to help small communities was by two things. We raised the cap on how much individual communities could get, but then we also put in much more money into those two funds. And so one of the things I hope Mound's able to do to help with their water treatment, Minatrista's in the same boat and a few others, is they're able to access some of those funds. Then we also started a new fund on emergent, for emerging contaminants because the EPA rules changed just recently to kick a lot of individual uh, water distribution or water wells, uh, individual distribution systems out of compliance like Mound. Um, now we have a new fund the, to address just that issue and it's called the Emerging Contaminants Fund. And this year we'll be putting, I hope, hundreds of millions of dollars into that. Because I doubt Mound will make the, they're not high enough on the list, but it's all very important to me. And so this is one of the areas where I really focus my time.
What is Mound doing to kind of bridge the gap? Because now that they're over the?
Well, they're out of luck. I mean, gosh, Charlie, you got to shut me up because I could talk a long time on this.
This is interesting.
So Mound needs about thirty-five million dollars. They want to do a plant. Right now they treat their water at the source. They have three wells. And they have been treating just like you guys, but they can't do that anymore because now they have manganese. And so they need to actually, um, they need to actually dilute their water. That's how a lot of communities deal with high manganese levels or other arsenic or other Dayton, Montrose. That's why I'm very grateful because you guys are kind of out here on the west side. So keep me posted if anything happens. But um, they, now they have to build a plant. And their plant, again, thirty-five million dollars. So far they've secured, I think, only about ten million dollars in state bonding. So now, see, remember what we talked about five minutes ago? They can't come back and ask again. We are going to ask again though, because they continue to try to split off that project and really for a city like Mound, they have a few other options, but they really need another chunk of money from capital investment.
Do they have a big holding tank?
Yeah.
They just do it into like a water tower or something?
Yep. Well, it's not in a water tower, but they have a, uh, it's a very small plant, but it would allow them, that's how a lot of communities deal with their emerging contaminants is they just drill another well. And then they bring a well, they bring a bunch of water that doesn't have that contaminant in.
Oh, okay.
And then they just mix it up and then distribute it. I mean, all, a lot of us drink water, excuse me, with those contaminants, they're just at a very small amount. So in somewhere like Minnetonka with fifty-five thousand people, it's pretty easy to dilute our water and keep those numbers down. But somewhere like, I'm not even going to say it because I don't want to jinx it, but somewhere like, somewhere like Mound where they only have, they actually only had two pumps or two wells at first. Now they're up to three. It's very hard to dilute with just two wells. Because if both of them are contaminated or have this, I don't want to say contaminated because it's not like that. But if two, two wells have high levels of one contaminant, then it's very hard to um, to dilute it. So then they needed to, to um, drill another one. Minatrista's in the almost exact same um, situation.
Um, two other, two other brief topics I want to make sure we cover is uh, LGA. We talked, spoke about that yesterday morning. Our council is constantly frustrated that we're one of the few cities around that gets zero LGA.
Yep.
Asked you to kind of see what you knew to look into that a bit. We talked.
I did, and actually I should get my phone out because I got a great answer on that. They actually did look at the, um, they did change the uh, formula last year, two years ago. Which I was surprised about.
I didn't know that.
Well, let me read what I got. So here's one of the beautiful things about being a state senator. If somebody asks me a question, I don't have to know. I just ask the thirty lawyers that are sitting in a room bored and looking for something to do, which is actually the honest to God truth. So um, anytime you have a question about any of this, and here's what Krista says about, okay, here is, I'm just going to read you straight up, okay? Oh, I've got a whole string here. To my knowledge, okay, wait, let me get, oh, gosh, there's a lot here. I should just forward this to you, Charlie. Just a second. Okay, here we go. So this is from one of our legal um, researchers. Long Lake receives zero dollars in local government aid because of city's characteristics, such as age of housing stock, which is based on nineteen forty and earlier. Taxable property values, et cetera, do not make it eligible based on the state's LGA formula. For background, I think the real determining factor with Long Lake is the sheer property value. In relationship to other cities, it has fairly high housing and property values that make it appear to have more resources than other communities. Again, that's an issue that we share with the other fourteen in our district. The city would probably argue that its small population limits how much it can actually tax without being too burdensome, um, which is why they'd like a shot at LGA. The LGA formula was last updated during the twenty twenty-three legislative session after extensive input from city and county groups, including the League of Minnesota. The formula is usually updated about once a decade. Although there's no set timeline for this to happen, usually cities and counties come together when they notice population and economic trends are no longer matching the current, current formula. There is a limited amount of money dedicated to LGA for all of the state's city, cities. This total also was updated by eighty million dollars in twenty twenty-three. In order to make sure the amount of money is targeting the neediest communities of the state, there is a formula that generally takes into account a city's needs, generally determined by overall tax capacity, age of housing stock, population trends and amounts of commercial industrial population in the city. Long Lake is not the only lake community that feels a current LGA formula is not meeting its needs. Several other cities, I'm reading this verbatim, so it is exactly what I heard from our researchers. Several other cities in greater Minnesota and some other suburban communities with high value properties point out that they have the same basic needs as other communities. True. And it's not reasonable to expect a small population like Long Lake to bear the entire cost of maintaining basic services. There is a small assistee, city's assistance program. Do you know of this?
Heard of that. I don't know much about it.
It was created in twenty fifteen to help cities with, with less than five thousand people pay for construction and maintenance of roads. However, that's usually not enough to help with growing and diverse needs of small cities. We should look into that, Charlie.
I feel like I might have actually looked into that and it, but the cap on the level of assistance was like, I feel.
Meniscule?
Yes.
What's meniscule?
Twenty thousand in compared to a twelve million dollar road project.
Oh, yeah, that's not enough. That's like a couple hours at WSB. Sorry if anybody's watching. I used to be a consultant, so I can make those jokes. Uh, it says, in all honesty, the odds of the LGA formula being revised in twenty twenty-six are very slim. Um, but we can look into it. It says, this is something that could be on the docket for twenty twenty-seven if you're willing to work on it. And then I have a bunch of other, so Charlie, I'm just going to forward you this as a, as a.
Is it the commercial property that's pushing us over? Because it seems like, um, I look at our housing stock and I don't see.
Our median value compared to neighboring communities median house values. I mean, it's.
It's like really, yeah, they're not close.
I'd argue that high value uh, comment as well because we, we're modestly valued compared to the surrounding communities. And we have a higher uh, uh, tax rate because, partly because of that, you know, than our surrounding communities as well. So we're, we get, we get hit hard on property taxes. And so I'm always disappointed to see what cities are getting LGA. And because you, you know, you see that list and it's like, wait a minute, why are they getting, we're not, you know?
Our demographics are the same.
We're, we're one square mile, our, our, you know, population is still probably around, what, nineteen hundred? And it hasn't changed uh, over, over the years. I mean, it's so.
We have truly limited resources. You know, larger communities have a larger tax base to go back to for, for support.
But, but you said.
Do not have that.
Yeah, and you said the population trends was part of the factor in the formula? I mean, we've, we've been flat, if not declining, I think.
Well, you're filled out, Jeanette's.
Only do that.
Here's what I think we should do. Um, Charlie, let's put LGA on our mayor list and see what other mayors are interested in looking at this. And then we'll have a meeting. You can bring any of your council staff or your city clerk. We'll offer that up to, I'm guessing St. Bonnie might be in the same um, uh, state as you guys. Yep, uh, probably Excelsior and others. Uh, we only have two uh, state aid cities, Minnetonka and who's our other state aid city? There's one other.
Wayzetta or, I don't know.
No, Wayzetta isn't state aid yet. But anyway.
Maple Plain, what, did you say date?
Well, no, they're not in her district. But yeah, Maple Plain is a good comparable, the exact same size as us and they.
But we can have other cities. They don't have to be, I mean, if you want to invite Maple Plain. But what we could do is if we had a meeting, we could have one, we could have Krista, this person who wrote this, or the um, you know, the tax researcher is there to answer questions. And it's not a hearing, it's just a meeting. And I think that might be helpful. Um, and so then we could answer some of your questions specifically. Well, how does commercial fit? What, and then that might help you kind of game it a little bit, right? Like, I mean, hasn't, haven't all of us been in a situation wherever where we think we get the criteria and then we try to meet it and yet the criteria is over here doing something else? So um, that might be a really good thing for us to do in November or December. Just a, a meeting and we have a researcher with us and we're able to ask questions. I can't, that's not my area of expertise, but I can certainly connect you to somebody who might be able to help us get to a place where you might get some local government aid.
All right, yeah, let's do that. That's, that sounds great. I'll, I'll keep that on the list and, and we'll, we'll talk about that in a future meeting.
Actually, I'll send that.
Years ago, right? Uh, probably twenty years ago we got it or?
I think twenty thirteen or twelve was like the last time from I remember Scott's.
Yeah, but even then it wasn't much.
No, it wasn't.
Funny enough, I probably actually do have records going back that might have some of that information. But I do remember it diminishing and diminishing and diminishing to the point where it was like twelve hundred dollars and then it was gone.
Yeah, that's not even.
And again, you know, a fully developed community, we aren't going to be adding housing stock. We're in a situation with aging infrastructure, neighborhoods that go back to somewhere between the forties to the sixties and seventies and some of these older subdivisions. You've got a main thoroughfare like Grand Avenue that functions as kind of a local collector arterial for Long Lake and actually connects to a county road. But the sheer size and scope of it, along with the utilities underneath it, it's completely cost prohibitive. I mean, two blocks of that road was what, one point two million?
Yeah, it's outrageous.
And, and uh, exactly. I mean, that's, that was our annual levy at the time. And so, you know, putting it in perspective, it's like, how, if small cities are going to continue to be able to sustain themselves,
Mm-hmm.
I think we need a little more support in some way to be able to do that.
Yeah, let's take.
Because we can't just continue to come back to the homeowners and the commercial property owners and say, we need more.
No, I hear you.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's a real struggle.
Well, let's get a group together and that way we can hear what the real, you know, how the criteria, how the formula works. And how, you know, honestly, you might be shooting yourself in the foot by doing a certain thing. I mean, I don't know. This is certainly not my area of expertise. So we'll put that on the calendar and I, I will actually send that out tomorrow to our mayors that it's something that we'll start working on. And again, they don't have to be in our district. It can be Maple Plain, it can be Hammel, whoever, whoever else might be interested, Loretto. Actually, does Hammel even have a city? Loretto would probably be a better example, so.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And then you said there's one other issue.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. The last one that, I mean, I brought up this morning, just wanted to bring it, bring it in on our, yesterday morning, I'm sorry, was the comp plan. And so that's how I met Professor Davidson. Um, you know, a few years ago, we were on this comp plan committee together, spent hours and weeks and days in that conference room back there and preparing our comp plan for, you know, a city that's, that's not growing, is it one square mile? No, no new water, um, infrastructure.
How much did it cost us in the end?
I think maybe a hundred thousand or so to, to WSB. I think maybe $100,000 or so to WSB, of course. And so just, and you, and I, yeah, I guess you hadn't heard this from other cities, but, but from cities our size, and our staff knows full well that just a lot of time, money, resources going to preparing those comp plans. We tried to, we tried to do it on the, on the easy and tried to do kind of a scaled-back version. It was rejected by the Met Council when we submitted our last one, so we had to, that's where we had to turn to WSB and, you know, spent $100,000 and it just, and even the Met Council acknowledges, their council members acknowledge that for small cities, it's just not very, and their staff, is my understanding as well, it's not very useful for their planning purposes. You're looking at, you know, your Corcorans and your cities that Minutrista's really growing. And certainly you can do to kind of help with that as far as, my understanding is from the Met Council, council members is that legislation would be needed to exempt certain cities under whatever criteria to not have to. And maybe we still submit a comp plan, but maybe it's just a reduced number of criteria versus the volumes and volumes. I think it was over 100 pages long.
Transportation planning and climate analysis.
Yeah.
And if you're not doing a lot of infrastructure or building out, why does the Met Council need to know what, where to go put the next sewer line?
I think that's a really good point.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I, I just, I.
Thanks, Charlie.
For cities, especially this under 5,000 group.
Yeah.
To be.
What is your population? I heard 1,900?
It's probably about 1,900.
Okay.
Give or take.
So non-state aid ones.
And we haven't put any new sewer lines in?
Anything that we put in is going to be replacement or repair, really.
Replace, yeah.
Yeah.
So Charlie, I searched. We did send out a question about that, but I didn't get any feedback on that yet. So I'll see what I can find out for you.
Appreciate that. Thanks, thanks.
Have we put a new, like, we haven't had a really big infrastructure, new infrastructure build out.
I don't think, probably closest with the apartments right here, and I don't know that, you know, there's maybe a short extension or something, but I don't think it was a major.
Did we do an extension?
I don't think they did anything major.
No, it was more replacing existing mains that were in there, doing a little bit more private lines and probably upsizing a little bit, which the developer, you know.
It was more on the private property, not the city side?
Exactly.
All right, anything else for the senator? Well, we've got, got her present. All right, well, appreciate you coming out tonight.
I'm happy to come back. If you wanted to do it a more formal thing, I think tonight was good for us to just answer questions. But if you want a specific presentation, I'm happy to do that. I will follow up, though, on LGA and on comp plans and try to get an answer for you. And I'll just send it to Charlie and Jeanette. You can distribute it.
When is the comp plan due, Charlie?
Well, I think it's, I think 20, 29, or 2029, maybe, for, it's 10 years, but we have to start working on it, I think. Maybe 2027, 28.
We'll actually probably even start having to begin planning for that exercise in 2026.
Well, let's have a goal of getting out of it.
An exemption just makes sense.
So, so in the 2040 comp plan, we had a certain number of new housing units that was going to be the goal, right?
Yes.
And, and so we put in these apartments here, we put in the senior housing across. We probably met that housing goal in just those two projects, right? And so we thought we were doing a good thing. Well, now is that sort of the new starting point for the 2050 comp plan? And we got labeled as a near-urban right after we did that.
We did petition, we.
We got out of that, right?
Yeah, we did get out of that.
But my point, my question is, so now we, we made really good progress towards that 2040 comp plan goal. And now are they going to say, now here's the new line in the sand, and, and now we're going to need another 100 units?
I'm not so sure that that's.
It's a Soviet plan.
I've actually been through a couple cycles of this now, which is kind of outing myself for quite how long I've been here, I realize. But it seems like, no matter what you do, the Met Council is always going to have an exorbitant goal for a community of our size that doesn't seem to reflect awareness of our community. That's the thing. I, I really strongly wish that when they develop these goals for their communities, that they are in some way reflective, that they've driven through once.
Yeah.
Because the requirements are simply completely not reflective of the communities. There's something that they assign on paper because of our position, but they don't reflect any knowledge or any drive-through of a community.
Didn't one person say, I remember he did come from the, I don't know who it was, I think it was a Met Council. What he said is what was really valuable about Long Lake, and we bring to the table for this, this geographic area, was our commercial district or the industrial district, because a lot of cities don't have that.
Yes.
And so, yeah, we've got some communities in our Senate district that have no commercial.
Or, and it's light industrial, too. A lot of it's.
Yeah, you guys have a nice industrial.
Nice mix here with commercial and industrial and residential, yeah, yeah.
Charlie, did you put your phone number in that email I sent you?
I did.
Good, because I don't know, for some reason, I still don't have your phone number.
Sure, it's, it's there. Safe travels to Grand Marie tomorrow and.
Bus leaves at seven.
Oh, I better not miss the bus then.
That's okay. It's a real treat to go on these trips, so, yeah. All right, well, thanks again. Please reach out to me. Charlie's got my cell, or he will have it after tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions and to come back. But we'll talk about LGA and some other things between now and the next time I, we see the govern, or the, the rest of the mayors. We meet about once a month. And, you know, other mayors bring city council people with them, so if you ever want to come.
Yeah.
City administrators, you're always welcome.
Just need a quorum notice.
Yeah, we'll just keep it at two, whatever.
Oh, yeah. Don't bring too many because we want to keep it, we want to keep it under the radar, so.
Yes.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's go back to item seven, or I'm sorry, eight, other business? We'll just, one more chance for other business, yeah?
I'm done.
Nothing?
Nothing for me.
All right, I think we covered my items. Councilmember Folly?
Oh, just thinking, so what does Sean, is Sean going to do for filling a void in terms of horsepower?
That's actually on my list there.
Okay, but I'll defer to you.
Take a run.
Just hoping you cover that, okay, we can get to, sure. All right, anything else you're doing?
No, it sounds like Jeanette has that one covered.
I will let Jeanette answer that question for you. I did want to let council know that I've talked to Sean today for an update on tree removal and how we're doing in the city. To date, we've already taken down fif, there have been 50 trees taken down and 17 of them, Public Works has done themselves.
Wow.
We've gotten the contractor that Sean used. We've actually had residents stop in and tell me what an amazing job they're doing and.
Who is that?
Twin, Twins Tree, something.
Twins Tree. Something involving twins.
You know what, I will look at my bills and, yes, but they're a wonderful group. I'm very, very happy with, with the job that they've done so far.
Apple Glen today, or lots of chainsaws at the end of Apple Glen on that project, where they partner with, Public Works partnered with the homeowner on that, so.
Correct, yep, yep. I actually worked with the homeowner myself to try to figure out a plan that worked for both of us. It was called Twins G Tree Service. Twins G Tree Service.
I felt like there had been a storm last night or something.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So.
Lost power the other night.
We did notice that here when we got to work, so.
It was only out for a couple of hours, but.
Yeah.
But Jane said theirs was out like over an hour. I saw it was, it affected 600. Mine was out for one minute.
There was a. On the fire calls, they, they mentioned a transformer might have been out, so I'm wondering if that was a reason for it.
We'll do it.
But sorry, yes, I just wanted to give council an update on trees. So I think that it's going really well, and Sean and I have been working very closely to keep, to plan for it in an unexpected budgeted year or so, and it will be budgeted appropriately in the future, so.
Fantastic. Thanks, Amanda?
Yes.
All right, Jeanette?
On the next meeting agenda, we'll be including an action item, asking council to authorize us to post for a maintenance worker to position for Public Works. What differentiates a two from a one is that a two already has water sewer certifications and is a little more operations-ready versus training and entry. And, and I think we feel really strongly that we really need to get Sean some knowledgeable support versus training support. We need, we need to get him a right hand that he can rely on. So I think you'll be seeing that there on the next agenda. And we'll try to put a fast track on that, you know, council willing there, because we, we want to get him some support and, and help with the team a little bit there.
Great, thanks. I did a couple quick city hall updates earlier, and that's that you're continuing to get quotes on the roof and you have some plumbing fixed in the restroom, so.
Yes. Yes, we've been a little busy and I'm, I'm meeting with a vendor tomorrow morning to see if I can get some information on city hall doors. There's a polling place accessibility grant with a deadline of the end of this month. And I've been assured that new entry doors with a better ADA system would actually meet one of the top three priorities of the grant. So I'm going to try to get some quotes. The maximum award on that is $20,000. Right now, there aren't a lot of applications out there. So we'll see what quotes come in at for new entry doors.
Good job.
Yeah.
We'll see what we can do.
Take that sign down one of these days.
Yes, we would love to take the sign down, yes. And have an ADA system that works without needing a set of instructions every time. We try to. Yeah, it's a, it's a tricky one.
All right, thanks for your work on that. All right, council member newcomer, last but not least, what's new with you?
I do say thank you very much for facilitating my absence and my attendance virtually. I appreciate it.
Sure, all right. Hope, well, as well. All right, so with that, our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, October 21st. City council meeting for sure, and perhaps a work session will decide as we get closer. All right, great, last call, anything else? All right, if there's some objection, adjourn the meeting by general consent. Hearing none, meeting is adjourned at 8:13 PM.
Thank you, Todd. It's one and late.